Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting for the town of Yountville. Today is August 2nd, 2011. I'd like to call the meeting to order and just let everybody know, if you're new to our council meetings, you can find agenda items and staff reports on the wall to your right. And please turn off, and I'll be sure to be an example here, please turn off your cellphones to not cause any interference with our microphones if you're not police or Cal Fire. So with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And Vice Mayor Chilton is excused. Let's move on, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda Item 4, Closed Session Report. I believe we have none from previous meeting.
That is correct, there's no report.
Thank you. We'll move on to adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Move to adopt agenda. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now I'll move on to Item 6, which is Public Comment. Now would be the time for any member of the public to address the council. Please come and join us. Yes, we need to have you up on the microphone so that everybody at home watching can also hear. So this is when you can speak to something that's not on tonight's agenda, so we welcome, if you could just introduce yourself and feel free to...
My name's Jean Bergen, and I work at the Veterans Home Post Office. I'm not dressed like this because I want to be. And I'm actually here concerned public safety. They're my people. I don't want it to close, and I'm just, I've dropped off petitions to some businesses in town. Hopefully, I can get a lot of signatures and get it stopped. I just don't want it to happen. I was kind of concerned, well, not kind of concerned, I am concerned about the safety. I have 230, almost 230 rented boxes, 229. And most of them, about half of them, are people that work at the vets' home or organizations within the vets' home. The other half are people that are in wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs, on motorized scooters, with walkers. So if that office were to close, 100-plus veterans would then have to come down into town to a P.O. box here, also to buy their stamps, things like that. They'd have to be shuttled in with their scooters and their motorized wheelchairs and their walkers, and they'd be on the sidewalk, in the parking lots, and we've already had some accidents with vets down here as it is. And I just think it's a huge safety issue, not to mention, I don't want to go anywhere. So that was really what I wanted to bring up, and I don't know, I've never done this before, so I don't really know what more I can do other than placing petitions, and if there's some sort of rule as to where I can and can't place them, things like that.
Okay. Well, thank you for mentioning that. Now, we're not really able to have a conversation about this because it's a non-agendized item.
Gotcha.
But what I will say is, the town staff and the council's been made aware of the situation. I received a letter from the U.S. Postal Service mentioning that this station was on a list of potential closure, and we've talked with the town manager about whom we can contact and what message we might be able to send. So that process is ongoing.
Excellent.
So there's nothing that we can say officially one way or the other right now, but I appreciate you coming down here and making sure people are aware of the situation.
Well, thank you for your time, and yeah, I, never mind, loss of thought. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? With that, I'll move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. Any questions or concerns about Consent Calendar, or is there a motion to approve said calendar?
Motion to adopt Consent Calendar. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you very much. Those consent items are adopted. Let's move on now to Item 8, which is the first of three presentations. We will receive a presentation from Cal Fire, our Public Safety Quarterly Report. We might. So, we're going to move right on. I will check.
Battalion Chief Parks is absent, and there is a written report in your staff packet. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to direct any of those to the right spot, or if you have questions, ask Mike and get an answer to you.
And what I'll also say is that that information is available on the town website, and if people would like to review that and have any follow-up questions, they can contact the town or Cal Fire. All right, I did just see the, I saw the uniform back there, I thought you were going to fill in. You sure? Last chance. All right. We'll move on then to Item 8B, which is the Sheriff's Department Public Safety Quarterly Report, and I know we have people here to report on last quarter, so, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For those in the audience who may not know me, my name is Cal Valenti with the Sheriff's Office, currently stationed in Yountville. So there is a Cal who will be doing the presentation, not Cal Fire, but me.
Very good.
I'll be reporting on the quarter of April, May, and June. This quarter, or most of this quarter, we have been without a supervisor or sergeant at the station. Sergeant Belmer has been out on a medical issue. I do have noticed that he's been progressing well, he stops him from time to time, and I recently heard that he will be returning to work next week, on Monday. So, good news there. Unfortunately, it's a week late for me, so I'm here instead of him. Also, in his absence, we have a deputy, Keith Welmsley, who's been filling in. I'd like to introduce, if I can have him step forward. Deputy Welmsley has been working with the Sheriff's Office for just over a year. Prior to that, he was employed by the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. He's also under consideration for the seat that's opened next quarter, I believe. Thank you. Also, this quarter, we had started the volunteer position. We have Donna Garassi, who's a town resident, who's been at the sheriff's station answering phones and receiving guests at the counter. She also, this quarter, went through the Citizens Academy at the sheriff's station, or actually, at the main sheriff's office on Airport. That is a program that the sheriff puts on to help members of the community become more familiar with the sheriff's office and its dealing. This quarter, we've had, the town has had several events, seven to be exact, events which would include a large tour de cure, and we also had everything from the tour de cure to a smaller event, which was the drug prescription turn-in, which was held at the sheriff's office. I wanted to thank the staff and commend them for, when these events come in, they overlook the planning and preparation and asks for certain things to be changed if needed, so to lower the impact on the town. And we see that, we noticed that even though these events can have large turnout population-wise, that there were no arrests or misdemeanor citations that were issued, and other than some traffic and parking issues, that that's the greatest impact that we noticed on these Calls for service on this quarter, we noticed that calls for service had gone up from 401 to 678. It was an increase of almost 300 calls. It was interesting, I didn't see, though, dramatic increases in theft reports. Assaults were up, investigative reports were up from 31 to 49. The other obvious increase could be attributed to, obviously, the last quarter, the first quarter of the year was a very wet and cold one, so there were not a lot of people out. So that, obviously, I think, contributed to the increase in calls. The highlighted case for this quarter, I used one that originated out of the vets' home. The vets' home pharmacy noticed and experienced loss in prescription medications from the pharmacy. Excuse me. And they'd received word weeks later, if not, I think almost a month later, that one of their pharmacy techs had been arrested and asked one of our officers stationed in Yountville to see if they had more information about that arrest. By looking into that, we learned that the party had been arrested for being under the influence and possession of narcotics, which allowed the deputy to look at the report and then also the evidence that was taken in that arrest from American Canyon. We were able to photograph pill bottles that she was in possession of and associate that to the vets' home pharmacy. She's currently not employed there anymore, and a complaint is under review by the DA's With regards to traffic enforcement, citations went up from 10 to 22, and there was also a large rise in parking citations. Again, I attribute that to the several events that were held in town and also the better weather. That about concludes my report. I would be more than happy to handle any questions from the council, if they have any.
Any questions about the quarterly report specifically?
Well, I, I, I may, thank you, Mayor Dunbar. Just one question, maybe this is for administration. First of all, thanks for the updates, great information, it's nice to know that we live in such a safe, seemingly safe, community. It'd be, I think, interesting, perhaps, if we could have this relative to the prior year period as well, because we do have a seasonal effect with tourists coming into town, and although April, May, June, well, it's the beginning of the tourist season, it would be interesting to see how we looked relative to the prior year, and if those are changing because we have more volume of people coming through, et cetera. I don't, I didn't recall seeing it in here, but that might be interesting to look at in a future report.
That, I could certainly do that. We'd have those on file, and I could certainly, on the next quarter report, start to reflect a comparison from last quarter and then also a comparison from a year ago.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I mean, for me, that would be at least helpful, maybe interesting as well. I think we're getting safer.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good suggestion. Any other comments about the quarterly report?
No.
No? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now, I believe, Steve, we have additional information coming from the Sheriff's Department.
We do. I'd like to introduce Captain Tracy Stewart, who has some additional information related to some recent incidents.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm here tonight to address some concerns that were brought to my attention with a letter to the editor regarding an arrest that the deputies assigned here in Yountville made about just over a week ago. Basically, the arrest, the call, was for a woman unconscious in a parking lot. And, again, your local deputies responded to the incident, and, start off by saying, in the letter, the person who wrote it accuses the deputies of being reactive, abusing their power, and making an unlawful arrest. There's a lot more details, people could have read the article in the paper. We take those allegations very serious. We don't want Yountville feeling like we're not safe to be around, that our officers are abusive and are going to use excessive force, and if they are, we want to address that. That's not something we would want to continue if it had happened. Based on that letter, we reached out to some of the people that were there. This was a very public event on a Saturday in a parking lot during the daytime, so a lot of people were there to witness it. When we reached out to other people that were there besides the letter writer, their perspective on what they saw and experienced was 180 degrees out from what she did. We had people praise the deputies for their patience, that they dealt with a extremely intoxicated, abusive, swearing person who was not able to care for themselves in a very patient manner. They felt that the amount of force that was used was reasonable, and just say that any time you see a person unconscious on the ground, it's going to have an emotional response. It's a difficult thing to see on anybody. And then when that's a woman, and you see two male officers show up, and they wind up at some point during the contact having to put hands on her, even if it's just holding the arm and gently putting on handcuffs, that is hard for people to see. And some people call that abuse of power and excessive force. The people I spoke to after that letter, after reading that letter, disagreed. What I was told from other people, as well as medical, fire, and our officers, and an outside person, was that this person was unconscious on the ground at some point, clearly unable to care for herself. When she regained consciousness, they attempted to treat her medically and get her taken to the hospital for care. She also lost consciousness a second time, swinging and kicking at medical responders, trying to get them to leave her alone. A family member was present and attempted to talk to the woman, to calm her down, to get her into the ambulance, to get a different option instead of law enforcement taking her, and that wasn't effective. And I would just, after that became not an option anymore because she would not go with an ambulance, the officers were left with the option of to leave a drunk person who keeps losing consciousness on their own, which clearly, we absolutely can't do, or the other option is, we arrest them for public intoxication, take them to the hospital, get them the medical treatment they might or might not need, and then book them into the jail till they're sober enough to care for themselves properly. If a person is so intoxicated that, one, they're passing out and they can't walk on their own, and they fall down in a parking lot, and then they don't want to go for their medical care that's required, and then you talk to them, a deputy spends 20 minutes saying, "Please, just get in the ambulance, please do this, please do that," for 20 minutes with an intoxicated person, eventually, you have to say, "This isn't working, time to go to the jail," and you put handcuffs on somebody. The person was concerned that this woman was placed, removed from the patrol car and placed in what we call a wrap. The same person in the car starts banging their head on a metal bar in the car, it's going to cause injuries, it's going to require medical treatment. We can't allow somebody who can't care for themselves to do further injury to themselves. So to prevent, to stop that action, one deputy holds her, the other one got the wrap, get her out of the car, and they get wrapped in this wrap. This is a fabric wrap that restrains the legs so they can't kick, and it places them in an upright seated position so that they don't have any issues with breathing, so that they can be safely transported without any medical emergencies or continuing to do harm to themselves. It's very gentle. One person even said that if that was their mother in that condition, needing that care, they would be okay with what happened. It's hard to watch, I wouldn't want to watch it, and I know what happens, it's uncomfortable, but I feel, based on what I was told, that it was reasonable action to get the woman the care she needed without further injuring herself. If you have any questions about the incident, that I can answer.
Are there any questions from council, Councilwoman Dornbecker?
I'd like to know, did the officers administer a breathalyzer test?
They did, and she was extremely intoxicated.
And was her hu, was her family member not able to take her to the hospital? Why was that?
He was unable to do that.
And I think one of the things that I just want to mention is that we're trying to protect the privacy of everyone that's involved, so we don't want to go into too many details about the incident, so I'll just mention that also.
I see. It is a very upsetting incident.
It was, and I know the people, and I feel badly for them. It's an embarrassing incident for anybody, and I would just point out to people, if you had somebody passed out drunk and no family member that was able to take them, what would you do? What would you want us to do with that person? If not, put them in a patrol car and take them to a hospital and then the jail. We don't have a lot of options in Napa County without a detox center.
Well, I appreciate you giving a follow-up to the incident, and I know there were some public concern and comments shared with me and with town staff, so I appreciate you coming and giving us a little bit further information. I know that there were a couple other topics that you wanted to mention also.
I probably noticed the very loud helicopter this morning. That was another marijuana grow up in the hills behind Domain Shandown, Napa Nook area, about 800 plants that they took out this morning. It is marijuana grow season, so there's probably going to be lots of helicopters flying over this side of the valley because those grows seem to be becoming more and more prevalent. You saw the Rutherford ones in the eastern, western hills of Napa County, as well as Berriessa. There are more and more marijuana grows that agents are finding. So it is the grow season, harvest season, so they'll be out a lot, trying to eradicate those plants. And besides that, I think I'm going to miss Cal's humor for the year-end report a little more than Keith's.
So we do expect Sergeant Belmer back next week, is what we're hearing from his medical leave?
Yes, he'll be back on Monday.
Okay. Any follow-up questions? No? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
That takes care of our public safety reports. We're going to move on to the next presentation, which is a proclamation for the V Foundation, which is holding an event here locally this weekend. Steve, did you have any introduction to this item?
I'd like to introduce Jane Brevelli, who is the Executive Director of the V Foundation, and after the presentation by the mayor, she may have a few words that she likes to share.
Yes, so if you will meet me at the podium, and I'd like to first read a proclamation and, with you, and then if you wanted to just make some comments also. Thanks for being here. This is a proclamation recognizing the contributions of the V Foundation. Whereas the V Foundation for Cancer Research was founded in 1993 by ESPN and the late Jim Valvano, legendary North Carolina State basketball coach and ESPN commentator. Jimmy V shared his dream of finding a cure for cancer in a momentous and emotional speech at the 1993 ESPY Awards, when he introduced the V Foundation for Cancer Research with the emphatic motto, "Don't give up, don't ever give up." And whereas the V Foundation for Cancer Research seeks to make a difference by generating broad-based support for cancer research by creating an urgent awareness among all Americans of the importance of the war against cancer. To date, the V Foundation has raised more than $100 million to fund cancer research grants nationwide, and ranks in the top five wine auction events in the country. The V Foundation awards 100% of all direct cash donations and net proceeds of events directly to cancer research and related programs. And whereas the V Foundation Wine Celebration has donated money in the Napa Valley to help build the Queen of the Valley Wellness Center, the St. Helena Hospital Cancer Center, and funded research grants at UCSF and Stanford totaling over $8.6 million. And whereas the V Foundation holds a research symposium where doctors from the V Scientific Advisory Board discuss current advances and discoveries in clinical applications, new diagnostics, and alternative treatments to cancer. The V Foundation opens the symposium to local community residents to attend. And whereas the V Foundation Wine Celebration has made Yountville its Napa Valley Wine Country Home for 13 years, and this year, it will be held on August 5th and 6th, this weekend, 2011. And whereas the V Foundation Wine Celebration Event is a very positive economic and cultural event for the town of Yountville, with participants occupying over 550 room nights and filling our local restaurants, which provides a positive contribution to our economy and brings prominent members of sports broadcasting, entertainment, technology, oncology, lifestyle, and the investment world to come together here in Yountville to participate in this world-class event. Now therefore, be it resolved, as Mayor of the town of Yountville, on behalf of the Town Council of the town of Yountville, I do hereby declare Friday, August 5th, 2011 as V Foundation Day, in support and recognition of the outstanding contributions the V Foundation makes to our community and to the fight against cancer.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much. And if you'd like to just make a few comments, feel free.
We've been coming to the Napa Valley now, this is our 13th year, and we have board members from all over the country. So we have chairmen of the U.S. Olympic Committee, heads of NFL, ESPN, multimillionaires, multi-billionaires, who all check their ego at the door, come to Yountville. They all change all their schedules, calendars, vacations, to be a part of this event, which is annually in the first full weekend of August each year. In board meetings, it was very important to us that, because we have raised over $100 million and continue to have a team of individuals on three boards, our headquarters, North Carolina, one based on the west coast, our offices are St. Helena, and then we have a Board of Directors, the top doctors in America at the top institutions, Mayo, Dana Farber, MD Anderson, everywhere. It came to, you know, as we were discussing things, it's like, we come in, in this whirlwind weekend every August, and does the community know what we give back? So this is very, very important to us that this proclamation came to be, because for those in our community, they have access to our research symposium to ask personally questions of the top oncologists in the world, those that are treated at Queen of the Valley or St. Helena Hospital. St. Helena Hospital Cancer Center, the atrium, the reception area is called the Atrium of Hope, and the V Foundation plaque is on the wall. The Queen of Valley Wellness Center, Peggy Fleming, who's on our board, put her shovel in the ground. I don't think, we were thinking, perhaps, the local community didn't realize how involved we were in that if they were getting local care at the Queen of the Valley, St. Helena Hospital, and then they were referred further to UCSF or Stanford, and staying within a two-hour boundary, trying to get help for themselves or their family, that that was available, that we were completely supporting that, and also that we give out a Vintner's Grant each year to, it's gone to the Rombowers, Dick and Ann Grace, Rob and Lael, different people that have suffered or lost people to cancer, and we fundraise in honor of our local Vintners, and they get to name a grant in the honor of cancer research that their loved one was suffering for. And this Friday, for the, when we get the proclamation officially by the mayor, most of our Vintner Grant honorees are going to be there for a commemorative picture altogether after many, many years, and it's going to be very celebratory for us. So we just wanted to make sure that we were available, you know, we were here to help the community. We're at 550 room nights, growing to 600 room nights. It used to be just a Friday, Saturday thing, now it's a Wednesday, Sunday, and it's going to continue to grow. We're going to be honoring Tim Egan this year, and we just love that you are supporting this, so thank you.
And could you also mention, we talked a little bit about the public clinic portion, could you describe when people might be able to participate in that?
Yes, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, August 6th, between 9:30 and 11:30, we bring in, I think we have 15 doctors flown in from all over the country. They do a presentation in the first hour, it's 9:30 to 11:30. In the first hour, they're addressing where the money went to. In the first hour, they're addressing where the money went to, what the advances are, and our whole purpose is to get drugs from labs to clinicals so we can help people. And so they address this, so they know, you know where your money's going, because we have very, very generous people in this valley and the people coming in. The second half, which is usually 10:30 to 11:30, all the doctors are now accessible to any person in the public that will come to them and say, "Hey, my dad got this kind of test result, we're scared." And they will advise free of charge on what to do, where to go, what their best recommendation is, or refer them on to someone who has a better specialty. And it's been tremendous. We've had people stand up in this symposium who have announced that they had cancer and they were scared to death, and were put in trials, and their lives have been saved. So we want to, you know, offer that to the community.
And where would people come?
The Historic Barrel Room at Bellagio. Bellagio Vineyard, we sell out both hotels, that's our headquarters. The Egan family, David Shipman, everyone you know, has been extremely supportive of us. And our main event is at Nicola Nickel. As you know, Gil Nickel passed of cancer, Beth Nickel is wonderful in supporting our cause. So we have a very tight, generous, loving, passionate group of people. And like I said, all the people on our boards, they will continue to be in the town of Yountville every August and truly believe that they're going to find a treatable cure for cancer and make it a treatable disease. So you have a very committed group of high-powered individuals, and they're all out there talking about the town of, you know, the town of Yountville. So what's special in closing is this Friday, we've usually branched out and gone to six different wineries and entertained. This year, we're bringing everybody together for the first time on its 13th year, and we'll have about 400 people across the street celebrating together before we go to Nicola Nickel and raise further funds for cancer research.
Well, great.
So we're very delighted and honored.
So many families are touched by this need, so thank you and the whole foundation for what you're all doing.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Well, just thank you very much, and we're so glad you chose Yountville.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, and we are going to now move on to our one public hearing for this evening, which is Agenda Item 9. It is proposed redistricting following the April 2010 federal census, and I believe we have our Napa County Registrar of Voters, John Tudor, here to discuss this.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and thank all of the members of the council for having me here this evening. It was very gracious of you to have the public hearing during your regular session. I always feel that that's a greater opportunity for the public, who may be here for other items, to at least participate in this activity, which as you can imagine is very important.
And if I may just interrupt you, just to get a little technicality out of the way, because this is technically a public hearing and not just a presentation. What I would like to do is officially open the public hearing, and I will welcome you as the first member of the public to comment. We will offer up to anyone else that's here following your presentation, and then we'll go through our normal public hearing process.
Thank you very much. This is sort of like a staff report, so that's my job. This is the second decade in which my office has served as staff to the Board of Supervisors and to the Napa Valley College and to the Napa County Board of Education, and I will be imposing on you again, Mr. Rogers and Ms. Baldi or Ms. Dom, to come back for a second public hearing. I think we've set September 6th as the date for the second set of redistricting, which have to do with our educational institutions. The Board of Supervisors, as you, can you, do you have a clicker that I can move it? Or, yeah?
Would you like Bob to do it?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. So the Board of Supervisors, because they're elected by district, unlike the Town Council, which is elected at large, has to reestablish their districts every 10 years based on the federal census. And the criteria, the reason for that is a Supreme Court decision in 1962, which is known as one person, one vote, where the Supreme Court of the United States struck down any district elections where there was not equal population. Many of the states in the United States had more like our U.S. Senate and Congress, where U.S. senators had two from each state, but Congress is by population. Many states had that. And the Supreme Court said, while the founding parents created in the Constitution these two different bodies, the states did not have that authority. And so they struck down any kinds of organizations like the State Senate in Texas, which was two members per county rather than by population, and they set that across the board from the lowest level at county supervisors or any cities that elect by district, all the way up through the Senate, the Assembly of California, the Congress, everyone except the U.S. Senate, which is protected by the constitutional provision of two per state, which was the founding parents ideal. So we have to balance the supervisory districts. We receive the information by census tract, that's plotted on a GIS map, so we have this area, and it says how many people are in it. And then we go to move the population around in order to make the districts equal in population. Now, when they're redistricting Congress, as was recently done by the Citizens Commission of the State of California, which is a new body that just is about to complete its work, they had, the U.S. Supreme Court has said Congress has to be within one voter. There's no gimme room. There can't be more or less than one voter between the 53 congressional districts difference in California. We have a little more leeway, and I'll explain that in a minute. But that's how important equal representation is, if you could. So again, equal population, we have to follow the laws. There are federal and state laws, the California Voting Rights Act and the Federal Voting Rights Act, which have to do with minority representation, and I'll talk about that in a minute. You cannot draw districts that either discriminate against a minority or dilute their influence. By the same token, you can create a district that gives a minority a majority interest in the ability to elect, and there's quite a bit of controversy about that in some parts of the country. That doesn't apply to us, and I'll explain why in Napa County for the supervisor districts. We try and maintain city boundaries so that we don't split cities, which is what we have to do with the City of Napa, because they're so big, they fit in five supervisory districts. We have to split the city with 75,000 people, which is 60% of the county's population. So they're represented by all five supervisors. But we try and keep Calistoga, St. Helena, Yountville, and American Canyon whole so that they're not split between two supervisor districts. And in Napa County, there isn't a great deal of community of interest issue, and I'll explain that in a minute when you see the statistics. It's not like we have one part of the county that has a certain kind of community of interest in a different part. Although I would say that the up-valley area has a community of interest as being the most agricultural part, although we do have agriculture in Carneras and in the American Canyon area and north of American Canyon, I think you could consider, as was discussed by the former speaker and by you, Mayor Dunbar, this is the agricultural heart of the Napa Valley. So total population, that's what my job is. I've given the population by the census. That 136,484 people is the census's figure. There's no arguing about it. That's what the U.S. Census says we have in Napa County, and that's the figure I work We have a special instance here, which is Napa State Hospital. Napa State Hospital has a number of patients who are not residents of Napa County, they are still residents of their home county. So there are 1,224 people in that census tract. Not all of them are patients, many of them are staff who live at the hospital. So I have to take that 1,224 people and decide how many of them are residents of Napa County. And the way I do that is we have 133 registered voters at Napa State Hospital. That's between staff members who live on the grounds and some patients who are competent to vote and are able to exercise their civil rights. And I used a population factor per registered household of 1.8, because in a registered household, there may be children under 18 who can't, and I'm going by total population. That includes citizens, non-citizens, voting age, non-voting age. And so I came up with 240 people of those 1,224 who are residents of Napa County, leaving 984 who are non-resident Napa State Hospital population. They are residents of other counties in California or other states perhaps, I don't know. And so our final number after we deduct those 984 is 135,500. And that's the number I work from to come up with the ideal population per district. When you divide 135,500 by five, you come up with 27,100 people. And if you look, the reason I held one hearing in American Canyon is they're the ones who caused me all the trouble, because in the past decade, from April of 2000 to April of 2010, they absorbed 80% of the growth in the whole county of Napa, went into those city limits. And so they are what really skewed the population. And as you can see, District 1 is 2,266 people below the mean before we redistrict. District 2 was 1,838. District 3, which prior, District 2 included Yountville, this proposal changes that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. That's okay. Go back, two more. There's one more. One, there we go. Thank you. District 3 was 3,000 behind because there was very little growth in the third district, in any of the cities up-valley. There's very little growth in Yountville, as you know. And so, and District 4 maintained its balance pretty well. It only was 459 people short. But look at District 5, the City of American Canyon is included in District 5. It was 7,573 people over. So of course I had to shrink the boundaries of the fifth supervisory district, represented by Supervisor Caldwell, so that I moved people out of the fifth district by shrinking the boundary. I couldn't move people, you can't pick people up and move them to another place if they don't want to go. So that was the situation. We had a 55.87% deviation, and my goal was to get below 5%. So what I did was, and this is one of the reasons I'm in Yountville, if you give me the next slide. So what I did was, do you have a laser pointer by any chance? So the old third district came down here and went across here and across here, and I had to move 3,000 people into that district. And the reason I'm spending time on the third district is because it impacts Yountville. Yountville, which is right here, was in the second district. In fact, the second district boundary was the eastern boundary of the town of Yountville. So what I did was, I spoke with each of the members of the Board of Supervisors. They had one meeting with me where they gave me their thoughts. That's all they could do before I started the process. Because of the Brown Act, they can't have conversations with me that they aren't going to have in public. And so since that point, they've only been allowed to ask me questions as I bring these proposals forward. They've not given me any comment, and I'll find out on September 13th if they're happy with this or not. So what I did was, we had some problems in the past where there were voters in the St. Helena Unified School District who were in the fourth district, who got ballots for the Napa Valley Unified School District, because we weren't aware we had any St. Helena Unified School District voters in the fourth supervisory district. So what I did this time was I used the Napa Valley Unified School District boundary as the southern boundary of the third district here, and moved this portion below that into the fourth district. And then we moved a little of this piece of the fourth district also into the third. And then I came down along the Silverado Trail, which moved this piece of the third district into the fourth, came along the top of the City of Napa, and then again followed the school district boundary, so we, because we had people in the, what was the first district, who also got the wrong ballots. And that is why this line is here. This had nothing to do with suggestions of the Board of Supervisors. This was my desire to avoid any kinds of election problems with people getting the wrong ballot. So if you'll go forward, well, I'll show you each of these in a blow-up, but I wanted to show you what we did. So there's my 27,100 people, and we drew the lines, which you saw the differences briefly there. District 1 has only 90 people more now instead of 2,216 too few. District 2 has 97 few, as opposed to 1,800 too few. District 3 is 189 shy instead of 3,101. The fourth district was minus 169, now it's plus 126. And District 5 is now plus 70 instead of being plus 7,573. So we had to move some, in 2000 when I did this, there hadn't been that kind of growth. American Canyon really shot, began its great growth surge in the early 2000s. And so that's why there weren't these kinds of changes. So, and just to point out, this number does not include the non-residents of the hospital. So that's, they're out of the 27,100, and they're also out of the number in the fifth district. Thank you. Now, speaking about the Voting Rights Act, Napa County, I hope it's not unusual, but is pretty well the Hispanic, and we've only looked at the Hispanic population. Just for your interest, the City of American Canyon, the largest demographic group there are Asian Pacific Islanders. A great deal of the growth in the last decade have been Asian Pacific Islanders moving into the City of American Canyon. They're upwardly mobile, they have good jobs, they've moved there because housing was less expensive, it's still close to the Bay Area. So 36% of the residents of American Canyon are Asian Pacific Islander, which is a huge percentage. But when you take that percentage against all of Napa County, they're a tiny percentage. So if American Canyon had to redistrict, they're elected at large and they don't, that would be a huge influence. But in terms of the county, it isn't. So we look primarily at our Hispanic population. And as you can see, the Hispanic population is pretty well spread among all the districts. There's no concentration of Hispanic population in any one of the districts. That's been the case in 2000, and it's still the case today. So we looked at that to make sure that the boundaries we drew were not shifting all the Hispanics into one supervisory district or moving them, spreading them between three districts. They were all close together, and as you can see, we end up with pretty much the same spread. It's a little, there have been a lot of Hispanic population growth and Asian Pacific Islander over the past decade. So the Hispanic population's grown, so these numbers have gone up somewhat. Then we have to look at the voting age population, and as you can see, they're pretty much spread throughout all the districts and were before. It wasn't that we took one major Hispanic population and split it up. As you can see, they were spread before and they're spread after. And so that's our response to the requirement that we take a look at minority populations to make sure they're not being discriminated against. Thank you, Julie. So I'm just going to run through these quickly. This isn't the one that affects Yountville so much. But the first district has for the first time expanded across the Silverado Trail and actually into downtown Napa, which is right here, and that's the major change. We had to, it turns out that Supervisor Wagonconnect moved during the redistricting process, so we had to make a little blip out of the second district to keep him in his own first district. Luckily, he didn't move very far. If he'd moved too far into the second district, he would have lost his job because he has to live in his district. So at the time, he moved into what was the first district, and so we've kept him in the first district. Then if you'll go to the, so this is a blow-up of the area of the first district. They've extended across Silverado Trail out into the Imola Shirtliff area and a little bit more up towards Lincoln Avenue. This was all fifth district, and I had to take them out of the fifth district to reduce the population there. Julie, thanks. Now, the second district, the second district used to come up here, go around the town of Yountville, go up towards Oakville and come down. Well, when I shifted the first district down to pick up that fifth district population, I had to move the second district over. And each of the supervisors have always had a tradition that they all wanted some vineyard lands in their district. Nobody wanted to be an urban supervisor in this county. So this was all first district. So this was all First District. It's now Second District, and the Second District actually comes down to State Highway 12 and picks up a part of Carneras. But Supervisor Wagonconnect or the First District maintains this part of Carneras as their vineyard element. So we shifted the Second District to the South and West, and to make up the fact that I'd shifted a lot of people in the First District into the Fifth District. Then if we could have the next slide. And then this is the blow-up of the Second District, which expanded, it shrank all up in here and expanded down again into the, almost the downtown portion of the City of Napa, again as we needed to pick up Fifth District population. And then if you could go to the Third. So this is the blow-up of the Third, and as you can see, Yountville is now in the Third District. When we shifted the Second, South and West, and we shifted the Fourth up to the Napa Valley Unified School District boundary, we had to pick up, so Supervisor, the Third District lost about 600 people here. So they had to pick up the 3,000 they were behind, plus those 600. Yountville is approximately 3,000 people, so it made perfect sense to bring the Third District boundary down here and then follow the School District line again up to the Western County boundary with Sonoma. And that's where, that's how Yountville shifted into the Third District. I mean, there's some rationale, talking about communities of interest. The three up-valley cities and towns are now in a single district. They share many of the same issues about tourism and traffic and those kinds of things. So the thought was that that would, when we speak of community of interest, that made a good sense to me. Now again, I don't make the decision as to the final districts, the Board of Supervisors does. So I've just tried to bring this proposal to them in the best way I can. And then if you could, the next one. And then this is the blow-up of the Third District at the southern end. They still have a little tiny piece of the City of Napa here, and this is the new park, the Trancus Crossing Park that was just opened by the City of Napa. Those are the only two City of Napa areas that are in the Third District. And then of course, instead of coming down here, it moved over to Silverado Trail, pushing this area, which is Soda Canyon and Atlas Peak, into the Fourth District. Of course, it picked up the town of Yountville, and then it went over to the Western County boundary. And again, the Fourth District, it moved up into this area, and it moved west in this area, and then it picked up a little bit of the Fifth District down in this area when we had to move some population. If I could have the next slide, Julie. And this is the blow-up of the Fourth. So you can see, it's sort of like a pinwheel in this area. We have City of Napa Fifth, City of Napa Fourth, City of Napa Second, and City of Napa, Central City of Napa First, with just this little piece of the City of Napa up on Salvador still in the Third. And then of course, the Fifth District had to lose 7,000 people. And so we moved, the Fifth District used to come down in this area, and we moved all of those either into the Fourth, the Second, or the First, with the majority going into the First after we shifted the Second down to pick up some of that population. The Second never went into Brown's Valley before it does now, which picked up some of the First popul, oop, that's okay, that's all right. And then of course, this is the City of American Canyon. As somebody pointed out to me, the City of American Canyon with 19,454 people now has 71% of the population in the Fifth District. So as you can imagine, their influence has grown along with their population over the past 10 years. And essentially, that's the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council if there are any, and then my contact information is there. I do want to say that if anybody wants to comment, they should prepare their comments, write them if possible, and send them to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here to conduct the public hearing, I'm not the person who sort of transcribes the public hearing. So if any members of the council or any members of the audience make a presentation tonight, I would like them, when they're done, to, if it's written, give it to me and I'll capture it. Or if it isn't written, if they could email it to me in an electronic format. And also, I'll forward it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors for the public hearing on the 13th.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then-
I think we probably will have some questions of you, and I think what I'd like to do is offer other members of the public to first comment if they have any, and then I'll, I'll ask you to come back up and we'll, we'll discuss in case they have questions for you as well.
Great, thank you, Mayor Dunbar.
So we'll reserve, I'd like to reserve our questions and comments of Mr. Tudor. If there is a member of the public that would like to comment on this, now would be the Yes, okay. Please come on up, and if you would kindly state your name and share your comments or questions.
Oh, thank you very much. My name's Gary Margadant. I live up on Mount Veder Road in Napa. And I've just, just come down to hear John, you know, tell us what he's been doing. And so, and I really want to thank him for the effort, you know, that he puts in, and thank him for his history of effort that he's always done in Napa County, because he was a supervisor at one time, and he's been our successor for quite a long period of time. I did want to just, I mean, it's interesting to hear John and the decisions about what he has to make here, and so it's, it's, it's a tough road a hoe. But I was just struck by a few things. I don't know, if you could go back one slide, back to the Fifth District, that would, that would be helpful. I'm, I'm just, it, I was just struck by the, the little bump that goes off to the left around-
Well, that's, you know-
The Napa Yacht Club.
Yeah, the yacht club, and I'm going, oh, what's that all about, you know? And why does the bump go to the right, you know? And I'm, I don't know, you have to shift stuff around. But that, that seemed, I don't know. I, I don't know how, you know, you look at it, but that was mainly the only comment I had on that. It sounds nice to have gone by the School District boundaries. I think that's a, a very, very useful method of doing that, simply because as you, you said, when you had trouble with the ballots, it wasn't a whole lot of fun. I did want to ask you one question. You mentioned the Hispanics. Were there any other groups that you were trying to work with at all?
And actually, if, if you could address us, since we're holding the hearing, and then I'll ask him to come back and comment.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's fine. That way also everybody that's listening in will be able to hear all the dialogue, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's the main thing. I just wondered what other groups were involved in, because I mean, some of the redistricting is trying, you know, you're, you're doing it on the, the state level, you know, for the congressional districts, you're doing it for the State Assembly and the, oh, what's the other one, the State Senate, you know, that's all, and the Board of Equalization, that's going on. And you know, they try to do and put groups together, or make, let's say, homogeneous communities, you know? And I've just wondered if there was any other considerations, you know, for that type of thing, other than the Hispanics which were mentioned. But that's all the comments that I have. But I certainly wanted to thank, you know, all of the work, you know, your counsel has done, and what John has done, you know, because this is quite a bit of work. And, you know, it's going to be interesting to see what happens on the 13th. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So I've written down a couple of comments, and John, you may remember them also, but is there any other member of the public that would like to comment? No, with that, I'll, I'll invite you to come back up, or we're still technically in our public hearing mode here. So if you could address those questions from Mr., is it Margadant?
Correct, yes.
First, about that segmented District Five, why include versus exclude the yacht club and the other area just to the north of that? And then also, I think you touched on the Hispanic and Asian Pacific Islander populations, but if there are any other groups that you were considering with the population divisions?
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and thank you for coming. You're my second public person in two hearings, one at each, that's doing better than none. This area was the Fifth District. It moved, it's been in the Fifth District for a long time. And so rather than, we decided to move the First District along Imola Avenue as far east as we needed, picking up this area in the Shertliff, Shetler area, where there's going to be some growth, by the way. There's an apartment complex being talked about by the City of Napa, and that is along Silverado Trail in here, where Saskel meets on the east side of that is a growth area for the City of Napa. It's close to downtown, and it's not fully developed yet. So we wanted to give that to the Fifth District, and rather than moving the yacht club and drawing a different line here, we figured it was easier to just use Imola as our boundary go east above it and leave the Fifth District west below it, which the Fifth District has been the yacht club since it's been developed. And then the second question was, there is a threshold that the Voting Rights Acts talk about, and in Napa County, as I mentioned, no other minority group meets the threshold of having to be something that has to be specifically looked at. African-Americans are a small number of, it's a percentage of the population in Napa County are small. Asian Pacific Islanders, even though they're the largest group in the City of American Canyon, countywide, they're very small compared, as you saw, to the Hispanic population. And the other ethnic groups that are, or minority groups that are to be looked at are all even smaller than those two. So that was the reason that we focused on the Hispanic population, which throughout much of California, but Mr. Mardokan is absolutely correct. The statewide commission spent a great deal of time looking at African-American constituencies in the City of Los Angeles and in LA County, at Asian Pacific Islander communities in San Mateo County, which represent a very large percentage of the population there. Just in Napa County, we only had the one demographic group that required us to look at it.
Thank you. So now what I'd like to do is ask council, we kind of deferred our questions of Mr. Tudor, so I'd like to ask the council to offer any questions they have of Mr. Tudor on his presentation or this whole process. I'll start, actually, to my far left with Councilmember Mueller. Questions for Mr. Tudor?
I do have a, a couple of questions. So as this redistricting continues and once it's complete, does this have any effect on the designated precincts that we all know about?
An excellent question. Probably not for the town of Yountville. You're moving as an entity from one supervisory district to the other, assuming the board adopts this proposal. You will probably still have the same number of precincts in the same locations and with the same boundaries. There's not been, precincts are not population, I mean, they're population-based, but they're based on voters, and there's a state limit as to how many voters you can have in a precinct. It's 1,000 voters. So we, Yountville comes nowhere close to that, of course, because you currently have five precincts, two at the Veterans Home and three in the town of Yountville. Veterans Home's also in the town of Yountville, but I designate those. And I don't see those changing. Those, we've done that at the Veterans Home. In the days when we had polling places, we had one precinct at the hospital because there's less mobility among the members there. We probably don't need that anymore, but I, but your question's an excellent one, Ms. Mueller, because we are going to re-precinct the entire county. Because of these huge shifts in First, Second, Third, Fourth, we are going to redo our precincts. Probably won't affect the town of Yountville, probably will not affect the City of St. Helena or the City of Calistoga, they're still in one, one supervisory district. There are going to be some major shifts, though, in the Imola area, which went into the First, and somewhere the Second came down into the City of Napa, because precinct boundaries cannot cross supervisor district boundaries. So those new boundaries may cut our current precincts. Plus, I want to re-precinct anyway. It's probably been 30 years since we precincted. We want to change the numbering system, and we're going to use our geographic information system to re-precinct. So we're going to do our best to capture everything. We're not going to have, you know, voters in one precinct who are split between two trustee areas of the college, and I'll discuss that when I come back on September 6th. So there is going to be a major re-precincting effort. That's not required by law, but it just makes sense when we've changed the supervisory district so much to re-precinct as well.
Then I have one more question, if I may. It's regarding the, the School Districts. So one of the changes with District Three, it now has two School Districts.
Actually, it has four School Districts.
Four?
Yes, it has Pope Valley, which is its own small school district. It has Howell Mountain, which is in the Angwin area. It's its own elementary, both of those two are elementary districts. It has, well, it's actually got five, it's got all of them. It's got Calistoga, it's got St. Helena Unified, it's got all of St. Helena Unified now. It's not split anymore between several supervisory districts. And it has that portion of the Napa Valley Unified School District that includes the town of Yountville and the areas south of Yountville between the, east, west of the highway over to Silverado Trail. That's all Napa Valley Unified School Districts. So the Third District has five School Districts that are either totally in it or the Napa Valley Unified School District partially in it.
Partially in it. And then what about the, the other districts? They're more exclusive to just Napa Unified, is that correct?
Yes, all the other districts are solely Napa Valley Unified. I got those little, we had eight voters in the First District up above where Mr. Mardokan lives on Mount Veder Road that were in the First Supervisory District, but were in St. Helena Unified School Districts. So they will now be in the Third District with everybody else from the St. Helena. But the other four districts will be solely Napa Valley Unified, which has, again, most of the population in the county is in the, is in the major School District.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing this with us. It's, it's important for us to see how this has worked. And I guess my, I just want to follow along with what Councilmember Mueller asked, and with regards to the School Districting, because obviously, Yountville, the community is, as a, as it stands, has its own elementary school, and it currently sits in VUSD. I'm assuming that, because you mentioned all the other five districts, that looking forward at the meeting September 6th, you'll be more explicit about how Yountville fits in within the School District?
Well, no. The School Districts are not changing at all from redistricting.
Okay.
What I'm talking about changing for the College Board and for the Board of Education, which is the county board that works with Barbara Nemko, the Superintendent of Schools, they elect by trustee area. And so the whole county is split into seven trustee areas, which is almost exactly the same for those two bodies. They don't elect five, they elect seven. So they can't match the supervisor districts. If they elected five, there'd only be the five supervisor districts. But no School District boundaries are changing or being changed by this at all. Yountville will remain in the Napa Valley Unified School District. The fact that you've shifted from the Second to the Third has absolutely no impact on that.
Okay, and that, that was sort of the thrust of my question, in the event the people in, the public are listening, maybe that would be of greater interest to them than how the supervisors are aligned, although who knows. I do find it interesting, and I, I agree, that with the redistricting, what you're getting with respect to the up-valley communities probably is in closer alignment, because we all share Highway 29 is sort of the, the main thoroughfare by which a large part of the visitors come through the community. So I think, I think it makes sense, and, you know, it's interesting to see the process you must go through. And I was sort of stricken by your first comment where you said, the census data that you are provided is sort of the final answer to how things are. There's nothing about looking at projects coming down the pipe, not to be, not to put a pun out there, but with Napa Pipe. There's nothing like that, that you would ever be able to bear in to say, we will have a future population growth here, so we need to redistrict in accordance with that? Because you don't do it until the bodies are in the chairs.
That's absolutely, well, the bodies are in the houses.
And now, right, same thing, watching TV.
And hopefully, they get out and exercise, too. But that's correct. I did get one comment about the Fifth District, nothing to do with the town of Yountville or the Third or Second District, about American Canyon's going to continue to grow, and if Napa Pipe goes, that's all Fifth District currently. I can't look forward 10 years. I will be looking forward when we get to the September 6th hearing, and I hope you'll all be here, because I'm, the City of American Canyon is too big for one college trustee area now. So I'm going to have to split them, and we'll talk about that.
Understood.
And I'll be meeting with them at another public hearing on September 20th. I have two processes going, actually, I've got three. I'm trying to get the board wrapped up by September 27th, hold the hearings for the college and the Board of Education with you and the City of American Canyon, and then wrap them up in October. And then everybody will be done with redistricting who needs to redistrict in Napa County.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Thank you, John. I, I was under the impression that the reason that Yountville was included in the District Two rather than District Three was because the, since all the up-valley towns are small, that it, you know, didn't want to feel like we were going to be just all the, you know, the up-valley towns lumped together. Is there some strategy that is, you know, makes it okay now when before it had been not?
Well, the, the Second District included Yountville from- Well, the 2nd District included Yountville from before I became the registrar of voters in 1998. It's been in the 2nd District for a long, long time. I can go back to when I was on the Board of Supervisors and the 2nd District Supervisor represented Yountville in 1974. In fact, if you have one minute, the reason I was, became a supervisor was because they redistricted in 1971, and I was just a private citizen. And they put me in a district where I thought I could do a better job than the incumbent. And they also put American Canyon for the first time in the 5th District. So I had a whole new body of people to talk to. So I ran for supervisor, because I had a district where I had an opportunity to make an impact. I won in the primary, which was nice, but, no, the 2nd District's always been in Yountville, and it had nothing to do with that. I mean, our main concern was to find 3,000 people to put into the 3rd District because of what's happened in American Canyon. We didn't have to do anything like that in 2000, because the growth rate had been so small between 1990 and 2000 that we didn't need to make those kinds of major shifts. But it really, you can blame the city, I'm kidding, but it's the city of American Canyon's growth that prompted the shift to include Yountville with the 3rd District. And once it was there, I think, as Councilmember Hall mentioned, it made sense that you do have a community of interest, and I think that works.
Thank you.
Is that it? Yeah, I do have a few questions. Some are mine, and some are, I'm forwarding from residents that have expressed some concerns.
Sure.
And first of all, one, just clarification. You often spoke of "we" in your presentation, but this is really, this is, is it all on you, the redistricting, then going to the Board of Supervisors?
That's correct. I'm the staff, and when I said "we," I have a wonderful staff helping me with the GIS. We purchased a software program that is the same software program that the California Citizens Redistricting Commission used. And it allowed us to sit in a room with the display and click on various census tracts and move them from District 1 to District 5, and it calculated the Hispanic population and the number of people, so we could see as we did that. So when I say "we," it's, I'm the registrar, they hired me to do it, but I have a team of great people help. I mean, there's one woman who helped me with the GIS, and the members of our staff participated.
Okay, and I'm going to somewhat repeat, but also hopefully expand on Councilmember Dornbecker's question. There's really been a concern that there's a loss of connectivity to four of the five supervisors by everything north of Napa. That, I understand the population numbers that you're balancing, but now we're looking, when you look at that overall map, geographically, it's a substantial amount of the, the typography of the valley is represented by a single supervisor. And there's great concern by residents in Yountville that that, that's one vote against four for all things south of Yountville. And there was some sense of at least more fairness when there are at least two supervisors paying attention to more up-valley interests, that you talk about respecting communities of interest. So could you speak to your, I guess, lack of concern that there's one individual representing the upper half of the entire valley?
Well, as you mentioned, it's the geography that did it. The northern part of Napa County is the most sparsely populated, as you're aware, so there isn't much I can do. I can't, you know, I could move people around and move the 3rd District more into the city of Napa, but it was felt by us in preparing this that we would maintain the community interests we talked about up-valley. Now, of course, the fact that you, you're only going to have one supervisor representing Yountville, we're never going to cut you in half, you're too small for that, and plus it's not good politics or good government. So you're always going to have one supervisor representing you. I think the question is, does that supervisor, I think the issue that you raise is, and I mentioned it earlier, is that all the supervisors wanted to have agricultural interests in their districts. And I think that's the key thing, whether it's up-valley agriculture, or Carneros agriculture, or the eastern agriculture in, between the city of Napa and American Canyon. I think all the supervisors are very attuned to that, as you've seen by the policies for the past 40 years. So I don't really see that the up-valley, and I think the up-valley is not its own area, it's an agricultural area, but it's associated with agricultural areas in all the districts. So I don't think there's any loss of political influence by the 3rd District representing a large geographic area. All the supervisors represent the agricultural community here, including the 2nd, which has the wineries and all of that up on, up on Mount Veder, and then the whole Carneros area down to Highway 12.
Thank you. There was another concern about the level of transparency that seemed to disappear from the first set of maps that got quite a bit of public comment. It seemed some negativity, at least as it was reported in the media, and that it, there was some concern that this whole next set of mapping was done kind of quietly, you talking to the Board of Supervisors, and now presenting the result of that. But could you, could you speak to that concern?
Of course.
And also maybe explain what more of this process exists, so people understand their ability to continue to participate, that this isn't necessarily, while it may very likely be the final mapping, it's not necessarily the final mapping.
Well, I think that's an excellent point. I didn't take a lot of time to explain the difference between what we're doing locally and what the California Citizens Redistricting Commission did, but I think that's part of the confusion on the people who talk to you. There's really only been one proposal, the one I used in American Canyon. The only change was that small movement to move Supervisor Wagon Connect back into the, into the 1st District. So there's only been one proposal. I think what they're concerned about is how the process went on with the Citizens Redistricting Commission, where there was that big first set of maps that came out in June, and then everything, there was, you know, the city of American Canyon took 1,100 petitions to the Citizens Commission in San Francisco. Supervisor Dillon testified at the state level. So there's never been any communication between myself and the board, as I pointed out at the beginning, other than to meet with each of them once privately, to understand what their thoughts were. And after that point, all their communications with me are public, and they've been questioned. So there hasn't been, I think there's a confusion between the citizens' maps and our maps. There's only really been one map with that small change that we talked about today.
So could you describe the Citizens Redistricting effort and how it relates to your effort here?
Okay. So the Citizens Redistricting Commission has to read, it was passed by the voters twice. The first time it was Senate Assembly and Board of Equalization. The second time in 2010, they added Congress, because Congress was going to be done by the legislature. So they looked at every electoral process in the state of California. And there is Citizens Commission, they were chosen by lot. The first eight were chosen out of 80 out of a lottery poll, and those eight chose six more from the first set. There were 26,000 applicants for that commission. And the 14 of them met very open. Everything's been on the web, everything's been public. They came up with their first set of maps. It caused some controversy, especially in Napa County, when American Canyon got split off and put in with Contra Costa County and parts of Alameda County, or Sacramento County, it all got up there. So they got all that feedback, and they came back with their second set of maps. Totally separate process from ours. Each of the counties does their own local redistricting. Sometimes it's the registrar, sometimes it's the planning department, sometimes it's the CEO's office. Napa's one of a few counties in the state where the registrar of voters does it, totally unrelated to theirs. Our maps are the ones you've seen. That proposal's been up on the website since, let's see, my first hearing in American Canyon was on July 19, so it's been on the website since the 15th of July, and it really hasn't changed, except for the one minor one I meant today. The other maps changed substantially. They changed the numbers of the Senate districts, the numbers of the Assembly districts, they put Napa County back together, they changed, and they don't know where the incumbents live. So we have two Assembly members in one of their new districts. Our own Assembly member, Michael Allen, is now in a district with Assembly member Chesbro. And I think there are several state senators who are now in one district, because the old districts were drawn to protect party lines and to protect incumbents. The new districts, the commission did not know where the incumbents, there were three things they could not know. Where the incumbents lived, what the voting history was in that area, and what the party registration was. So, and the other big difference is, we're nonpartisan. We don't run by party, either at the local level, yourselves or myself as a county officer, nor do the Board of Supervisors. So none of that is in our consideration.
Thank you for describing the differences. Two other things that I will ask of you. One is to clarify the next steps. And we've talked about the September 6 date as your public hearing on educational institutions redistricting, but what are the next steps specifically for this?
For the Board of Supervisors.
And also, if you could speak to, since it will impact potentially the town of Yountville, the status of the District 3 Supervisor, if she is up for election or when she's up for election, how things would directly impact our community?
All right. Well, let me tell you about the process. There's a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, September 13 at 9:30. That's the first time the board, I mean, the board's seen this. I've been sending it to them, but under their restraints that they can't communicate things to me, that they would want me to change things. They can't tell me to do that. They have to tell me that in a public hearing if they don't like what I've done. So that'll be the first time they're able to give me feedback, and they can't talk to each other under the Brown Act. So Supervisor X can't say to Supervisor Y, "How about if I take this and you take that?" They can't do that. So they're going to have to do that in public, and we'll see where it comes. It's three votes, hopefully unanimous, but it has to be three members of the board. There's no special majority required. They'll have a hearing on the 13th. They will then consider that, they'll give me direction on the 13th. If there are changes they want made, I'll try and do them. Their second hearing is on the 20th, but that can be postponed. They have to adopt an ordinance with the new legal descriptions of the supervisor districts, which are being drafted based on this proposal, but can be changed. And then that's the first reading of the ordinance. If they don't make substantial changes on the 13th, they'll hear again on the 20th. That's another public hearing. They can still change things. Then the third public hearing is on September 27, a week later, which is the second reading of the ordinance. And once that's over, the ordinance is passed. It takes 30 days before it's effective. That gives the public an opportunity to file a referendum if they didn't like what was done. And then the end of October, redistricting will be finished for the Board of Supervisors, and those will be the new district boundaries. Now Supervisor Dillon was just reelected in 2010, so she stands for reelection in 2014. And in that election, the vote, assuming this proposal remains, Yountville voters will be voting for that race, whether Supervisor Dillon runs again or they're two new people. The same with Supervisor Luce is up in 2012, his four-year term is up, so he'll be running in the new 2nd District. And the voters in Yountville will not, assuming this stays, the voters in the town of Yountville will not be in the election that Supervisor Luce will have in June of 2012.
Very well, thank you. What I would like to do is, since the public hearing is technically still open, offer an opportunity, if you'd like to readdress the issue, or if you feel like you're satisfied with your participation in the public hearing.
Sure.
And then I think after you, we will close the public hearing.
Oh.
You've come all this way, so I want to make sure you were participating.
Oh, well, lovely. It's very nice of you, and thank you, thank you so much for that, that opportunity. I wanted to make one comment. I mean, on that map that I looked at on 5, I just realized that the district, the boundary went up the river, and it didn't go up Highway 29. And the difference is, has been, in that space, nobody lives there. So it really did, it just looks funny. So if you look at that, that was probably, if he had gone up Highway 29, nobody would have thought it visually, it wouldn't have been a, a, you know, it looked funny, but, you know, he just went up the river, is what he did, went the old boundary. And there's absolutely nothing else in that, in that area, other than the river and the flood plain, and nobody lives there.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating. And I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. I will also ask staff of the exact action you'd like from us, if it's just receipt of this, you know, holding the public hearing, receiving comment, if we have any additional comments from council, and that's it.
Actually, Mayor Council, this was a courtesy on the part of the town, working in partnership with the county of Napa, so there's no formal action on your part, other than to provide the opportunity for community members to speak, as they did today, and for you all, as elected officials, to provide your input. If you would like, we'll make sure that any of your comments, if you would direct them to me, I will put them on one letterhead and forward to John's office, as he had requested, if that's something you'd like to do, or encourage you to do that separately, if that's what your preference would be.
I will offer council comments right now, if they'd like to, or we could also provide them. Councilmember Mueller, comment now?
Well, the recommendation I'd like to propose is the timeline that Mr. Tudor discussed, since this will affect all the people in Yountville. Could we put that on our website, so that people have an opportunity, if they miss one of the public hearings, to maybe go to the other one? I think there, you know, there might be people who do have great interest and might go to our website, so if we could do that, I think that would be helpful.
And I think certainly we can add a link to the county website, on our website, that has all the information readily available. And we'll get those dates listed, so the public understands each step of the process as it continues. Any other comments for right now?
No.
No? Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for coming. And Margadon?
Margadon.
Margadon, Mr. Margadon, thank you for participating also. I almost got it twice.
You got it right.
I know, I should have stopped then. Thank you all. We will move on now to Item 10, Administrative Regular Items. Do we have any?
We'll move right on to...
Item 11.
Item 11, Administrative Staff Information Reports.
And would you like, is there any comment on the V Marketplace New Entryway Structure informational report that was presented by staff?
Again, I know, you know, the purpose of our informational reports are, if you have questions, and then also occasionally in this item, we will provide verbal updates with some information that may have occurred that's minor, not requiring an action that we'd like to share with you, and we do have a few of those tonight. But again, the item that you saw in the informational report, you will see construction forthcoming on some gateway entryways, and that was a follow-up to a prior council action and direction, and then went back to ZDRB for approval.
So this has full ZDRB approval at this point with those changes you referenced?
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of council on that item?
Mayor Denneberg, do you have another item on staff report, or two, actually?
Okay.
One is that the town has received word that there's an $80,000 grant from the US Bureau of Reclamation. This is a past council item, authorizing the town manager apply for this grant for the recycled water project. So just want to share that good news with the town council and the public.
Glad we asked.
Well done.
Yes. And do we have a project in the CAP that's specific to that grant?
Yes, you do. Your major recycled water pipeline project, that is our big project, and we also have a planning grant application with a state revolving fund. And, you know, obviously, anything that we're able to obtain will help to reduce the rate payer expense. Although I will share with everybody that while we have been successful in grants, part of the current conversation in both Sacramento and Washington DC, all focus on eliminating funding for discretionary programs, such as the ones that have funded the grants that we're receiving.
So you're saying cash that check as soon as it arrives? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
There may not be any more.
Right. Well, well done, way to stay out front of that and keep looking for more opportunities that we can follow up on. And we have another report?
Just a quick update, that we did announce in a prior meeting that we did receive our GFPA CAFER Award. So this is not a box of chocolates, but it is our plaque that came in the mail this week, so we'll be proudly presenting that maybe in the lobby this time.
It'll go in the town hall lobby.
Excellent. And again, kudos to you and...
Congratulations.
And any and all other staff that helped achieve that level of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up, please. And with your TOT report you gave us today?
Yay.
You're on the right track.
And the TOT information will be updated tomorrow on the website as well, for all to see.
Thank you, some very positive news there as well. Let's move on to councilmember meeting reports. Do we have, Councilmember Dornbecker, I'll start with you, if I may, on meeting reports?
Yes, on Thursday, last Thursday evening, I attended the League of City, League of California Cities Quarterly Meeting at the Doubletree and American Canyon. And at that meeting, I was the representative for the nominating committee and had the pleasure of nominating Mayor... of nominating Mayor John Dunbar to be the new president of the Northern California-- League of California Cities branch. Also Greg Brockbank, Brockbank, excuse me, who is the Vice Mayor of San Rafael, is now the first vice president. And Kathleen Schaefer, who was a councilperson from the city of Sebastopol, was nominated and voted to be the second vice president. And they will all be installed in September at the League of California Cities' next meeting. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I was even present at that meeting. It wasn't one where I wasn't there and I was voted in.
[laughing]
Any other meeting reports?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mueller, any meeting reports?
Nope. We have had no meetings. The Upper Waste Management will be meeting before we meet again. That will be August the 15th, here in the council chambers at 1:30. It's a Monday.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall, any meetings?
Well, the Napa River Watershed Information Center meeting was canceled due to the lack of a quorum. I can say that I was going to be participatory, but was emailed the last minute that the meeting was canceled and will meet in September. As it's a bimonthly meeting, so nope, no updates there.
Okay, thank you. Then I will move on to a few meetings that I attended just today at the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Board meeting. Our representative, Chip Borrell, was reappointed to the Flood Control's Technical Advisory Panel, along with four other incumbents. So congratulations and thanks to Chip for continuing in that capacity. Also, in the spirit of receiving money, we did receive approval for $20,000. Let's see, this is for the Maintenance and Watershed Management Cost Sharing Agreement.
Which is on consent.
Oh, great. So I'm glad that it actually happened. And let's see, what are my other notes here? The Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency also approved Jim Baker as our town representative. And Cal Vans is a van pool management company that the NCTPA authorized to assume control over the farmworker van pool program. There are 10 vans that have been granted to the NCTPA for use in that capacity. They were underutilized, so we're handing off that to Cal Vans. And they are actually able to not only continue the farmworker van pool, but expand it out to other industries. So hopefully, the entire valley will be able to take advantage of the vans that had been donated to the NCTPA. And also, they have brought on some smaller buses into the system that hopefully will be more energy and cost-effective. I believe most of those routes are down in the city of Napa. I think that might cover my notes there. I do just want to show folks, there are some new rider guides, both in English and Spanish, that are available at the NCTPA. I'll leave a couple here for the town to have. But there's also information on their websites for any route changes that might impact our residents. Are there any non-meeting comments that council would like to share?
I would just--
Counselor Dornbecker.
Please. Like to remind everyone to come out to the Focus BBQ on Labor Day and prepare to buy lots of drawing tickets and help Focus do its good work for the town. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? With that--
Counsel, I do have one, and I apologize. Samantha Holland-Wagner and I had a very positive meeting today with Dennis Crymeyer and Nicole with the branch. And as you know, you've asked us to work on efforts to improve library hours and to particularly work on a volunteer program. So I'm just reporting that while it's not finished, there's still work, but the library staff is taking the request seriously, and we're making positive progress towards that.
Thank you. And I'd also like to commend Samantha and also the entire Yountville Arts Committee for a very well-attended and well-run mystery writers panel and reception. That was a really fun kind of kickoff to the literary program. So thanks to you and to the Arts Committee, and in particular Nancy Gates, who really took over that event and made it a great success. So thanks to all the folks that attended that as well. I did want to just give one very quick update, because we'll be meeting just prior to this. But as an update to the September 11th World Trade Center project that I've been working on with local resident and winery owner Sean Larkin, we are going to be holding a memorial dedication ceremony in the community center courtyard. We've decided at 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, September 11th, for a dedication of the World Trade Center artifact that we have received from the Port Authorities of New York and New Jersey, so that we can honor and recognize all the lives that were lost and impacted on the attacks 10 years ago. So there'll be more information being released soon, but I appreciate the support that the town has given and the residents for that memorial. And hopefully, folks can come out and participate in that 4 o'clock on September 11th. With that, just I'd also like to remind folks about the V Foundation's Open Public Clinic, basically, on cancer research. It's an amazing group of cancer researchers and doctors that are at our disposal. So if people, 9:30 to 11:30, have an opportunity, concerns about anything to do with cancer, cancer research, feel free to go to the Historic Billroom over at Vintage Estates for that this Saturday. With that, future agenda items, we're approaching Yountville days. Looks like we're getting close to awarding a bid for our street light project. I'm sure Vice Mayor Chilton will be happy to hear that. He's been fairly outspoken about his desire to see those upgraded. And also, a conversation on wayfinding sign program. We did have a good business meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and some local business members about wayfinding signage and some of the needs that we have here in town. And town staff was there. So that's a good conversation to continue. Any need for a closed session tonight? I hope not, since our town attorney is excused for the evening. With that, I will move on to Item 15, everyone's favorite, adjourning to the next regular scheduled meeting of Tuesday, September 6th at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.